Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everybody. I'm just gonna call the meeting to order. Happy New Year and welcome to the Eileen Dondaro Foley City Council Chambers. I appreciate that everyone has come here on a difficult day weather-wise and I'd like to welcome the school board, the police commission, the fire commission, the city council, staff from all the different departments, and we appreciate your making the effort. I hope it will bode well for us that we didn't delay the process and decide not to cancel this, so I do appreciate that. This evening, we're gonna have an opportunity to review the budget schedule. The city manager will make a presentation in that regard, start talking about projections, not unlike the process that we've engaged in for the past three years that seems to have served fairly well. And with that, I'll turn it over to the city manager. Oh, one other thing. I did want to recognize, we have our new school board member here, Patrick Ellis. Welcome. This will be a fun year for you. Thanks for taking on that responsibility.
Thank you, Your Honor. What we did is we handed out the items in advance. Given the size of the group, it would probably take an hour or so to get it around, but we wanted to make sure you had things in front of you that we're gonna be discussing this evening. The first item that you have is the budget schedule. And I'd like to just say that all the items that we have here, that as we go through the budget process, we will utilize the website, so that already the schedule is on the website. The thing that I would ask each department, that if there is any conflicts with any of the dates, that after the meeting, you talk to myself or Judy. But I'm just gonna do the highlights of the major dates for everybody. Obviously, we're here tonight for the committee of the whole, but the first major event is in the budget schedule is the fire commission will be holding its public hearing on January 21st. The school board will be holding its first hearing on January 27th. The city council will be having a work session on the capital improvement plan on February 2nd. The police commission will be holding their public hearing on February 6th. The school board will have its second public hearing on February 10th. On March 2nd, the city council will be holding a public hearing on the CIP. On March 16th, the city council's anticipated to adopt the CIP. On April 10th, we will be sending the budget to the city council. Then on Wednesday, April 15th, there will be a public hearing on the city manager's proposed fiscal year 2010 budget, with presentations as we've done in the past, from police, fire, school, and municipal departments. Then we start into work sessions, and the first work session will be on April 22nd, and that will be with the school department. On April 23rd, there will be a work session with the city council to review the municipal budget. On April 29th, there will be a work session with the city council to review the police department budget and the fire department budget. And then, as we've done over the last few years, we will reopen the public hearing on May 11th, and there'll be conversation by the public and the city council as to some of the adjustments that are being proposed within the budgets themselves. And if needed, on May 13th, there would be a final work session for the budget, and hopefully, we will be able to adopt the budget, the city council will be able to adopt the budget, on Monday, June 8th. And just a couple of things, is that all the work sessions will begin at 6:30 and will be televised. All the public hearings will begin at 7:00 PM, with the exception of the police commission, which will start at 6:00 PM. Let's see. That is pretty much the schedule. The next page, we just show the CIP schedule, and then the fee committee schedule as well. I won't go through that, but if there are any questions relative to that, or any conflicts, please see myself or Judy Belanger to address that. And as I said, this schedule is on the website as of today. Also, the next item you have in your packet is a listing of the CPI, the consumer price index, and the area that is boxed in, the Boston-Brockton CPI, is the CPI that has been used for collective bargaining. As you can see, there's a 10-year history of the CPI here. As of November 2007 to November 2008, the CPI, Boston-based, was .7 percent, that was less than 1 percent for that period, November to November. Because there is a new collective bargaining agreement with the teachers that requires a 10-year rolling average, you can see that the 10-year rolling average is 3 percent. So that is what will have to be budgeted for wages for the teachers. In the event that we have other collective bargaining agreements approved, and if they go with this negotiated settlement, then you would have that 10-year rolling average. We don't know that for sure at this time. I know that the labor negotiator, along with the human resource director and the various boards and commissions, are working on their collective bargaining agreements. The next item that you have is a package of information that deals with projections of what we would like to call a status quo budget for fiscal year 2010. That would be no reduction in services, pretty much same type of budget with same type of staffing they had in prior fiscal years. And we're able to do a projection, which I'm gonna walk through now with the help of Judy Belanger. The first, well, really, we'll be hitting on five areas: salaries and benefits, health insurance premiums, retirement, debt service, and county tax. The first page deals with salary and benefits. And you can see that we've, because of the collective bargaining, we have had to do some estimates, and we have really felt that the estimates in these budgets would be well-served to the various boards and commissions. To leave those out would understate the budget substantially. So in the salaries for fiscal '09, we've assumed a 3.14 percent, which is the 10-year rolling average. And in fiscal '10, with the November to November, a number I just told you about, that's 3 percent, so we've assumed the 3 percent increase there for all departments. Also, within these salary numbers are step increases. Step increases, because of the turnover we've had in the various departments through retirements and the like, we now have people that are coming in new, and they will be going through a step process in accordance with our collective bargaining agreements, and approximately one-third of our workforce are going through that step process. So when you look down at the bottom and you see that the wages are going up 5 percent, the salaries are going up 5 percent, that's a combination of the cost of living as well as the step increases that have been collectively bargained. The million dollars that we show all the way to the right that we're backing out, really is, we did that because last year, we put a line item in called the collective bargaining line item. And if we left that in on the bottom there, we'd double count, because we, up in the total salaries line, we put in the 3.14 plus the 3 percent. So you see that we wanted to have a rollout, so you have an actual number as to what our potential liability is for salaries for fiscal year 10. So you can see that total salaries, overtime, other benefits, collective bargaining, well, without the collective bargaining, would be $42.9 million, or a $2.1 million increase over last year. Now, moving to the next page, we're showing what the health insurance 10-year rate history was, and if, for the newer members that are here, what we have done is, about seven years ago, Judy, we established a stabilization fund for health insurance, and what we try to do is use a 10-year average for our increase in health insurance. Even though you look at the yellow bar, the guaranteed maximum rate increase that has been provided by the local government center is 16.5 percent over last year. Because the average over the last 10 years has been 11.45 percent, we'll be asking departments to budget at 11.45 percent, not at the 16.5 percent. So moving on to the next page, it gives more or less an actual dollar summary of that for each department, municipal, police, fire, and school department gives the totals, and it shows what you'll have to budget for next year to achieve the 11.45 percent. If you have any questions regarding that, Judy or myself can work with you on that. But as you can see, using that 11.45 percent, it's about $982,000 increase over the previous year. Moving on to the retirement rate increase, you can see it's broken down into group one and group two. Group one, we refer to as employees, are the public works employees, library, recreation, et cetera. And you can see that the percent of payroll that is gonna be required for that retirement is approximately 9 percent, which is a 4 percent change over the fiscal '09 retirement number. Teachers were at 5.8 percent of payroll in '09. That is going up to 6.96 percent, or a 20 percent increase over the previous fiscal year. Group two employees, group two employees have, in the police department, in fiscal '09, had 11.84 percent of payroll. That's going up to 12.68 percent of payroll, or approximately 7 percent increase over fiscal '09. And fire is at 15.92 percent of payroll, and they're going up to 16.05 percent of payroll, or less than a 1 percent increase. I might add that under the group one, teachers, and under group two, police and fire, the state does provide 35 percent of the costs, not these costs here, you would add another 35 percent on to the number, but are provided by the state. The only group of employees that does not get state subsidy for the retirement are the municipal general employees, which I've referred to in this handout as employees. The total increase in, estimated for all departments, for fiscal, over fiscal '09, is approximately $261,000. But each department's gonna have to go through that. You know your department numbers better, where you're at, and work very closely with Judy, the finance director, to hone those numbers to a little better. The next area is the operating budget. And again, we wanted to go through and give everybody an idea on where we'd be at, and we show total salaries, overtime, retirement, health insurance, leave termination, workers' compensation, other personal benefits, collective bargaining contingency, which is backed out again, so that we don't double count it, and other operating, because what we did with other operating is, we held it at zero, because that's basically gonna be our goal, is to hold everything else at zero. And you can see that the increases for those items is $3.3 million over fiscal '09, or a little under 5 percent increase from fiscal '09 to fiscal '10. Moving on to the next area, debt service. Debt service is an area that we spent a lot of time on internally in the finance department, working with Steve Bartlett from the school department, to try to make sure that we had reasonable cash flow expectations regarding the proposed middle school. We're not trying to predetermine what the policy decision will be of the city council, but we felt that it was important to have some kind of cash flow projection in the event the city council proceeds with the middle school vote. So what we did is, we were able to use some of those cash flow projections, and as I've indicated in the past, what we'll be doing is using bond anticipation notes, even though that we might have a full authorization for the middle school, that whatever number is provided by the city council, we will then go out and borrow in increments, depending on what the cash flow is required for that time period. So in the time period from July 1, 2009 through June 30, 2010, we believe that the cash flow is at about, will be around $10 million. So we based our numbers on that, and also, we also put some money in, in the event that we go forward for this fiscal year. So we've been pretty tight on our cash flow with regards to this, and we believe that we're able, from what you saw, the city council saw at the retreat, it's about, how much less, Judy, that we had? About six?
It was about five, almost $600,000.
About $600,000 less than what we had projected, because of the way we had projected the cash flow. In event, also, we will be talking Monday night regarding the bond issue for citywide improvements, and we dropped those by about $1.3 million, so we have savings there as well, if the city council proceeds with that. So you can see what the net debt next year will be, $5.8 million. The gross debt is $8.1 million projected. The next area, which we have no authority over, we, once we get a bill, we have to pay it, it's the county tax. We're estimated a 3.4 percent increase, or about $3.8 million. That could change, but, you know, we don't have any specific information now, so this is just a number that we believe is in our best guess. Then we have the non-operating part of the budget, and we have, as I've indicated, tax anticipation notes, debt service payments, overlay, capital outlay. Also, just to be aware, that that shows a million dollars. In that location, the subcommittee of the capital improvement plan has, is gonna be recommending to the planning board, an $800,000 capital outlay, but it has yet to go through the process, so we left the million dollars in there. We didn't wanna presuppose what would happen with the planning board, or the city council for that matter. So during the budget process, we'll make, we'll hone that number a little better. County, as I've indicated, at $3.8 million. Contingency, still at $300,000. And other general non-operating at about $1.5 million. So you can see that the overall non-operating expenditure is going up $681,000, or 4.4 percent. And you can see how the breakdown occurs on non-operating, and it's pretty obvious what the major item within non-operating is, it's debt service payments. Finally, probably the most important sheet that we'll be looking at, really is the major changes to maintain a status quo budget. It shows the salary and benefits, health insurance and premiums, retirement costs, gross debt service, the county tax, and then the other adjustments, basically, are adjustments that we made where we knew we were gonna have such things as equipment that aren't gonna be repeated for the next year, and things of that sort. So the overall increase is about $4 million. And finally, on the last page, this is a similar type of page you'll see in the fiscal 2010 summary budget. This page basically gives you total operating and non-operating, along with potential revenues for total tax, estimated tax rate, which would be at $17.85, or an 87 cent increase, which would be approximately 5 percent over the previous year. I'd like to say that I've met with various department heads, I've discussed with the various department heads the issue of no tax increase. We have pretty much an understanding among department heads that they are gonna try very hard to achieve that goal. We all fully understand the economic conditions, not only in the state, but nationally. So that's gonna be, our goal is to achieve the no tax increase. There's gonna be a lot of work that has to be done to do that, and we'll have to start that after tonight to figure out how we're gonna get there. But that is our preliminary budget estimate, and just be aware, it's a very preliminary estimate. It shows, as I said, an 87 cent increase to the tax rate, and that would be the status quo budget. And in order to get it down, we would have to make some adjustments on services and other things to achieve the no tax increase.
Thank you, John, and thank you, Judy, and thank you for getting us that information so early in the year, so that we have an opportunity to begin the process. Before I open the discussion, I would just like to say that I have mentioned that I personally do not believe that we wanna have a tax increase, and that we don't wanna have a budget increase. And I have not said that lightly without thought, and I know a number of you have expressed similar sentiments, and this is the beginning of the process, not the end. So this isn't, this is an opportunity for us all to get together and discuss the ways that we might accomplish these kinds of things, if that's indeed what the group consensus is, as we go forward. We are fortunate in Portsmouth that we have spent our money wisely and managed it well in years gone by. We've been responsible about capital improvement, and we've been responsible about funding the public agencies we need to bring us the services that make this a great city. I think that that is one reason why it's easier for us, in a very difficult economic time, to consider the difficult goals that I've mentioned, and I ask you consideration of that. These budget processes that we've engaged in now for some years, I believe, are great for the city in that they are civil, open, and well-informed. It's a substantive discussion, and it's an informed discussion, and it's done in a civil and appropriate way, and because of that, I think we have the ability to do this. Because we have faith in each other, we have the opportunity to manage our city without artificial tax caps, or other mechanisms that take away from us, in Portsmouth, what is, I believe, our creativity, and I believe we have creativity. I'm gonna pass out an article from Monday's Wall Street Journal, which mentions that in many states, legislation is underway to try and create tax caps, not just at the local level, but it's state legislation that seeks to enforce that. I believe we've been able to manage our money and do things here in a way that uses our best intelligence and not some mechanism, and I think that we'll be a better city in the future for that. So I don't think a formula's gonna help us, rather, I think the good, hard work of everyone here, and the good faith of all the commissions and the staffs and everyone involved, might get us there. And if we can achieve that sort of goal, hopefully, without layoffs, and without that kind of impact on services, I think we'd be acting in our city's best interest. And that's why I appreciate your indulgence for a rare speech from the chair. And with that, I'd like to open the discussion for inquiries of the city manager. We've done this before, now everybody's done it at least once, with the exception of Patrick and Valerie French, who is assisting us this evening. I'd like to also welcome her. And with that, would anyone like to begin the discussion or inquiry?
Just have a question, John.
Jerry.
What's the definition of capital overlay?
Yeah. The overlay item within the budget is an item that is utilized for any time we have an appeal on a tax assessment. We set aside money. Many times, in other states and other municipalities, what you do is, you would actually calculate what you would consider a tax collection rate, you know, 97 percent, 98 percent. We don't do it that way here. We put aside money and set it aside under state law, so that if there is a tax appeal and we have to pay money back after the taxes have been rendered to us, then that money is used for that purpose.
A little question. Is this based on historical, this million dollars that's in here, is this a historical?
It is based on historical information. We go back and take a look, and what we also try to do, what's important about it, is we can hold over that from year to year. So for example, if there is a tax case outstanding for two or three years, we hold that money over, so it builds up into a fund, where we leave it until we have those decisions made or any of those settlements made. It's better than trying, some communities do it a little differently. When they have a large tax appeal, they, you know, some have borrowed money. We don't wanna do that. But typically, what people do in New Hampshire is, they set aside money in the overlay account, and that is overseen by DRA. They make sure that you don't overdo it in that account, and just keep it aside, so that when you have a tax appeal, that you have money aside to pay for that judgment.
Thank you. Counselor Dwyer.
Would you maybe just say slower what you were saying before about debt service?
Sure.
On the page seven, what portion of the, is the projected new debt for FY '10 what you're projecting for the middle school or tax anticipation?
Now, let me go through what we're anticipating for next year, and hopefully, this will be of help to you. We have, originally, we were looking at $880,000 of new debt going on for next year. And what we've done is, we've been able to reduce that down by $598,000 to $280,000 of new debt going on. And what we have is the middle school interest. We've been able to take that down from $400,000 that we anticipated back in November to $150,000. I have a sheet here that I can provide you if you want at another time, but it really goes through, what, this is really more or less, when we first talked about it early on, you know, we did not have, you know, a lot of the information that we needed to give ourselves a projection. And we were able to reduce that down because of the cash flow requirements for the middle school in fiscal '10. And then we've done citywide improvements, we've been able to reduce down for that, and we've deleted a few other projects. So we've been able to reduce our projected, from when you saw it at the retreat, by about $600,000.
And I think the only reason I'm looking at the line that says projected new debt, and it says 857, and so when you just said 280,000 of new debt, I'm trying...
No, this was to, what we reduced from when you saw it at the retreat. I wanted to explain, so that if you were looking at numbers from the retreat...
No, but, so what we are looking at is what you're projecting.
Yes, correct. I'm sorry if you misunderstood.
Counselor Penelakis.
Yes. John, if we were to have to have the school building aid deferred, would that hurt us at this point?
Yeah. The one thing I would have to say is that we, from time to time, the state does defer paying us what we've already been authorized to get.
Right.
And so that typically has been in the $30,000, $40,000 range. It's never been substantial, but they do that with everybody, I'm sure that... I'm, I'm sure that anybody that's involved in that knows that they'll, from every municipality, they'll slice off a slight percent so that statewide it adds up to be substantial. But for us, it might be 40 to 50,000 that we wouldn't get in revenue that we anticipated.
I, I was just looking at the amount for the high schools still we have coming in from them.
Right.
And I was wondering if that would.
That one has been, that one has been, on a couple occasions, dropped by about 10 or 20,000. And then they make it up.
You may have another following year.
Then they make it up in the following year.
Have the money to make it up.
But.
I was just curious to how much it would hit.
Yeah, that's what happens.
Comments, questions, discussion? Counsel Kennedy.
On that same comment, I don't know, have we heard anything from the state about school building aid?
I would defer that to the building, uh, school department because I haven't been dealing with them.
Does Dr. Childman, anyone care to, are we ready to get a response at some point or do we yet know? Or Dr. Liston?
We really don't have any information to share this evening. We haven't heard anything new.
I'm sure everyone's watching very closely.
Ah, yes, they are.
Do we have a guess on when we might hear? A month, two months?
Pardon me, could you speak up?
Do we have a guess on when we might hear?
We, I have no information to share when we're going to hear anything, no.
Just a comment too, as we continue. We have many people and a lot of mics, but not quite enough. So in some cases where there are dead spots, unless you're trying to say something under radar, you may want to look towards the mic. So anyone else care to make inquiries or talk about the process or ask questions or make statements of advocacy? John?
One thing I, I did talk to the department heads about, and this is something I'll be recommending to the city council, doesn't mean that it'll be, once we go through the budget process, when the city council gets a budget, one of the things I will be doing and proposing to do, so that departments are aware of this, with the 10-year rolling average, we anticipate, if collective bargaining is successful with that, that we would have a 3% increase in wages. My, I, I.
Go ahead.
Okay. I would, what my recommendation's going to be is because of the significant economic downturn and because of the, what we're facing, is that I'll propose, I am going to propose to take, assuming, let's say, it's a million dollars that would be required to fund 3% of salaries, not the step increases, not health, but the actual wages. Because those collective bargaining agreements will be coming in periodically throughout the year, hopefully. It will be my recommendation to fund that million dollars from the fund balance. City's fund balance right now is about 9.6% of the previous year's budget. The city has an ordinance in place that says it cannot fall below 7%. I do not like using one-time revenue sources, but in this particular instance, there's two reasons why I believe it would be prudent to do it. Number one, because of the uncertain nature of our collective bargaining. We don't know when they will be settled, how they will be settled. Number two, because of the extenuating circumstances on the economy. So we would, if we use a million dollars from fund balance to bring down this number by a million dollars, that would mean our fund balance would come down to about 8.3% of previous year's budget. I would not recommend going any further than that. Because every time you use a one-time revenue source, in the next year, you have to make that up. But because of the circumstances this year and because of the, the issues that we're facing, and in addition, because of the way collective bargaining is, because not everybody's going to have a collective bargaining agreement before the budget process starts, during, hopefully, next fiscal year, you will, simply what we'll do is like we did this year, is transfer the money over to that budget when those collective bargaining agreements are, are put in place. So it may be more than, we're going to put the actual number in that we estimate of 3%. It might be a little bit more than the million dollars. We don't have that number just yet. But we, we will put that number in. And it will show on the expenditure side as the collective bargaining item, like we did this year. But on the revenue side, it'll have a direct offset. So that number that's on the expenditure side of assumably $1 million, you'll see that it will be on the revenue side of a million dollars from a, a use of fund balance. And that would be what I will be recommending in, in the budget, just for wages, just for collectively bargained wages, not for step increases, not for health insurance increases, just for the wages. Right now, everybody, because of the way we've done it in the past, everybody has to budget for their step increases because we have not, we've always instituted step increases even during collective bargaining processes. So that would be what I will be recommending to the city council.
Thank you. Counsel Pentalakis.
Yes. I was wondering, John, is there any way we're going to try to implement something that will help out in our welfare department? Because health and human services has taken a big cut, plus the county, when it got off at the state level, it goes down to the county level. And the county level is cutting it down. And it's going to fall back on the cities and towns.
It will be my intent, if I might, Your Honor, it will be my intent to not touch the outside social service agency proposals. It will be not my, it will be my intent not to cut them. They may only get a very minor, if flat, increase. But I've already talked to, to Keith about it. And with regards to the welfare budget, as you're well aware, on the state statute, if we overspend that by $300,000, we have a statutory responsibility to fund that.
Counsel Kennedy.
I guess my question is, is where are we at with property evaluations? I know we're starting that cycle and I just really need to know, and so the public knows where we're at in that.
Well, as, thank you. If I might, Your Honor, I'll proceed. Property evaluations, we have our assessment update that will be taken place in 2011. Okay? That's required by state law. But as you are aware, we have different classes of property within the city. And we try to keep a ratio at a certain level in which the Department of Revenue Administration wants us to stay at. So for example, we, we might use a 90% ratio level for single-family residential. And, and let's say, commercial drops down to 88% or 87%. DRA would like to see you move that up to stay in that 90% rate. So no class of property gets totally out of whack so that in 2011, you don't have this huge shift. That was the whole intent of the law. So what we do is, let's say, for example, we have a, a class of property that every other class of property is at 90% ratio. And we see a class of property that's 83%. We know that they're now way undervalued. So we'll go in and we'll review that, the assessor will review that, and bring that up to the appropriate values.
Counsel Kennedy.
I guess another question I have to ask that a little bit is, where are we at with the values of Portsmouth? What are we looking at? Or, I mean, I know there's.
You mean new growth?
Not so much new growth, but where are we at with the property values, with the continuing economic times of property value decrease?
Sure.
And so where are we looking at right now for Portsmouth as a value to evaluate these costs?
Well, I will have to say that I don't have the full empirical data on that. But from the discussions I've had with people out in the industry, the real estate industry, we have held pretty well. Not that we're growing hugely, but we're not decreasing as, as well. There are properties that are selling still in Portsmouth at what is considered a good, good rate. I, I guess the best way to, to respond to that is to probably have a report from the assessor, probably at our January 26 meeting, if that's what, we'll probably have, well, I'll have, have her there because she has a full understanding of it. But what, from what I've understand, you know, is that we have not had those dips that other parts of the country have. I mean, obviously, there are really four areas that have had huge dips, Florida, Arizona, California, Nevada. And those have been huge, huge hits. We have had, in our, in our properties, have not had, have not seen that. And on foreclosures, we've had very minimal foreclosures in the city of Portsmouth. I think we had 12 last year. And a lot of times, those don't even get to foreclosure because there's a private sale before foreclosure. So we haven't had that issue. We, we, we've been lucky thus far. Doesn't mean that's going to maintain, so. But we will have the assessor here on the 26th, January 26th.
Okay, thanks, Counsel Kennedy. Another question?
I mean, I guess, on, on response to all that is, from what I've heard from some people, is a concern that the assessments will raise on, maybe we keep it at level funded, but the assessment might go up, which would increase our taxes. So if there's any way we can kind of confirm or defer people, a little bit more than maybe a month in advance?
Sure.
Where they're trying to manage their money a little bit tighter right now, that, you know, instead of giving the tax bills out, maybe we could look at potentially giving them out a little earlier, I guess is what I'm saying, so that people know and prepare for it.
What we will do, we will look, we're looking at class of property now. And we'll look at the ratios. And if we see one that pops up at us, we'll advise the city council as to where that area is that's in deficiency. So if one is, if let's say all other properties are at a 90% ratio and one class of properties at 83%, we'll bring it to your attention.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Hattman.
Just, just so I understand, when we say no tax increase, that means we're going to stay at $16.98 as a tax rate? Which is last year's number?
That would be what I would understand as.
Zero and zero.
Okay. I just.
I mean, that's just, I'm just one guy. Counsel Smith.
Thank you. Just want to get the information in here. You're showing that the state education tax rate, you're looking at a seven cent drop, going from $2.40 down to $2.33. Have we got an indication from the state that that's something they're anticipating on doing?
Yes, actually, the, the adequate education formula, if you see in fiscal year '09, is at 8.6 million dollars. And that had dropped to 8.4. And we do get indication from the state early enough to calculate this. But moving forward with the state education funding process is still uncertain, but I think for fiscal year '10, we're okay.
Thanks, Counsel Smith.
And, and on the county tax, has there been any indication from them? Or, I know when, and one of the things that came out of our, our retreat was an attempt to start working closer with county. Where do we sit in that to try to be able to get their budget and talk to them about control on it?
I'll let Laura answer, Counsel Pentalakis answer that question.
We're just going into the budget process. We just selected the committees and they will start after January 12th to work on the budgets. They have been told to control the budgets, cut them, or whatever they can do to bring that tax down. But we don't know what it's going to be.
Right. And, and what I'll do is.
Excuse me, John.
No, I'm sorry.
It comes out of the commissioner's office first. After the commissioners get it, and then they send it out to the towns and cities. And then it goes to the departments to, I don't know why it goes to departments. I guess they made them up to begin with, but they have been told to control them.
Thanks, Representative Pentalakis. Did you have, did you have, Chief Leclerc?
Thanks, Assistant Mayor. Just to get the terminology right, and John is correct, we have talked about this, but I don't want the wrong terminology out there. In order to have a status quo budget, that would require us to have the same funds, same services, same people in place, and have fixed costs covered, a 0% budget, as it's been talked about in the papers, really isn't possible. A 0% budget, the way it's been presented, is a decrease. I know for us, it's a 3% decrease already. I believe other departments are in the same boat. So status quo would seem to indicate that no services would be cut and programs wouldn't change, and that's not the case.
No, let me, let me correct that, Chief, I might. When I said that, this, this, tonight, these numbers will show you what a status quo budget would be. So in order to get to a zero tax, would require going less than status quo, would require a cut in services. I believe I said that, but I didn't say specifically what it would be. Because we're in the beginning of the process. What I'm showing you tonight, in those documents that I gave you, is if we, if we increase taxes by 87 cents, we would still be able to maintain a status quo budget. That would be out, without using the fund balance, that would be budgeting the 3% for wages, would be funding your step increases, would be doing all that. My suggestion is that as we start in this process, we try to work towards zero. What I indicated earlier was that I would propose, in the budget, which isn't reflected here, a use of a million dollars or thereabouts from our fund balance to be put in a collective bargaining line item, so you wouldn't, in your budget, have to deal with the 3% for salary increases. You are correct that you have to make up the step increases and the health insurance increase and the retirement. And that will require cut in services. That's correct.
I'll just reiterate to say, Chief, go back to you. He's asking the right question, because we all have it on our mind, is can we do this? Let's not confuse a goal with a result. And let's see how we do. And, and I ask us to consider, as we discuss this, that we all keep open minds. We certainly all want to do that. Chief Leclerc, you had something for that.
Well, I understand, and the idea is not to argue with John. The idea is just to make sure everybody understands.
Yeah, yeah.
That a 0% life goes on budget is not what we're talking about.
It's effectively a cut.
It's a cut. It's a 3% cut for the fire department, which means there'll be less staffing, there'll be, whatever that means, we'll discuss that in the public hearing.
Yeah.
But if I understand it correctly, John, and correct me if I'm wrong, in order to maintain a tax rate of $16.98, further cuts, further than the 3% that affect my department, I could be looking at 6%, 8%, 9%, 10% cuts over last year. To maintain last year's tax rate.
Correct. Counsel Dwyer. Okay.
Well, I, I'm so glad you raised that because I, I think there's already massive confusion about terminology. I would just like to suggest we do not attach the term status quo to the term budget, that we're talking about status quo services. Because I think the term status quo budget is going to get everyone in the.
Sure. This was just to try to find the, if you have a better terminology, I'll accept it.
But, but so that we're not fooling ourselves.
Noted, Counsel Dwyer, to be, you know, one could deem a status quo budget to be the full set of increases here to keep services the same. And I think that that is a very valid and appropriate.
Sure.
And that's why we're here.
Okay.
To have this discussion. Assistant Mayor.
Yeah, since we're on that subject of status quo, I, even though I think the goal of a zero increase in the tax rate is certainly something we should try to achieve or at least come close to, you know, I'm, I would be opposed to a budget that did cut services and particularly personnel. For the same reasons, you know, what everybody's talking about, in these hard economic times, we need to keep taxes in check. It's for the same reason that we don't want to lay people off. I would, I would be, I would fight against it, providing a budget that laid off our municipal workers.
Noted. I'm sure many share that sentiment. Counsel Novlin Clayber.
You can repeat my question. My question is, how many, are there many people retiring from all of our departments?
The question is, what is the, what is the retirement factor as this factors in and filling of positions? That sort of question, no doubt that will be part of the discussion. Counsel Novlin Clayber's asked the question. Do you have a sense or what we can do?
Yeah, what we can do is, I can get you that information. I'll get it from the human resources and we'll send it out.
I'm sure that'll be a big factor in whether, whether and how we.
Yeah, we'll get that.
Counsel Smith.
Thank you. Yeah, since this is really, since we don't have a budget committee anymore and it's a committee of the whole, this is really our way of city councilors and the council being able to let the other departments know where we're going. I, for one, don't want to see anybody get laid off. And if that means we have to do hiring freeze, we do have some, some people through attrition have, have left, I'm fine with that. I absolutely agree with what the chief is saying, realizing that you have a county tax that is looking at going up, going up some, that we don't have a control of, per se. Who makes it up? Well, we have to cut it from the, from the municipal side. While it is tough, it is necessary. It's, we all know the tough economic times out there. It's been the phone calls that I'm getting from people, it's what we're, we've kind of been charged with. And at the same time, when we have a lot of new contracts working out, new hires, some major ones coming up, we have to be careful too, that the departments are not making promises they can't keep. And such as, you know, you're, you're offering new, new employees or salary increases, that's going to overextend your budget. Because they're being able to come back to us at a later time and say, you know, can we get some out of contingency? I don't know if I'm going to be able to support that in a later time. Who knows what the economy is going to do? But we really need, and we're asking all the departments, to realize the, the pressures that is, everyone is being felt with. And please, go back, look at your budgets. I know it's difficult. But when it comes up to show us your final budgets, make sure we have a line item somewhere or a showing of exactly where it's going to hurt. Where are we looking in, not to pick on the fire department, but he's sitting next to me. But if, if we have a six, if you have to take a 6% cut, where is that coming from? What services are a possible loss? from, what services are a possible loss, and let us know, so we have those actual facts in front of us, when we make that the final decision. I think that's going to, that's going to be a lot of information that I'm going to be looking for when we look at the final budget.
Thanks, Councilor Smith. Further comment and discussion? Councilor Hetmanek, then Councilor Pentelakis?
I think in a general sense, I look at the inflation number, and I think that's interesting, it's 0.7 percent, and yet the city's budget is, if nothing changes, going to go up over 5 percent. And my concern is, there's a dramatic difference in the public, in the private sector, people aren't getting 5 percent increases, in fact, a lot of people are worried about their jobs. So I think we have to make a valiant attempt to try to achieve this 0 percent budget. The other concern I have is, every year, this compounds upon itself, so if we let the budget grow rapidly in three years, and we have all these building projects come through, the debt service increases even more, we're going to see whopping tax increases with the infrastructure changes and needs that we have, increasing water bills and the taxpayers. We, on one hand, we're very concerned about the city employees, and I share that concern, but I'm also concerned about the taxpayers who are struggling to meet their tax bill, after all, the property taxes are often the biggest bill people have. And we're tampering with the biggest bill people have. So we have to be careful about that.
Thanks, Councilor Hetmanek. Further, further comment, Councilor Pentelakis?
Yes, I think we're all sitting here tonight, and we all have to understand that we're not spending our own money, we're spending the taxpayers' money, and we have to stop and look at that. Nobody wants to see layoffs, nobody wants to see anybody hurt, but the fact of the matter is, that you can only push these taxpayers just so far, and they can't live. They can't stay in our city, so what good is it going to be if we have an empty city, with people just have to move out because we've gone so high? And every year, we have increased the taxes, and they're getting to the point now that there, maybe one year we didn't, I, I think we've come close every year that I've been here, a small percentage. And the idea of it is, that the people out there are getting to the point now, they just can't take anymore. So I think if we all just work together, we can find some solutions that will happen. And just look at it, it's not that we're spending somebody else's money, and we need to look at it and say, well, maybe I can. I mean, even at the state level, we've started to take away cars away from people, we've started taking conferences away from people, we've started taking fees for belonging to organizations. Them sound like minor little things, but they add up in the run of a day.
Before we go to Councilor Novlin Clayber, I've been asked by a couple of people, and I just asked the city manager, I think it's good for everybody to know this, this fact, I was originally asked by the press, I will admit. When was the last time we were at or near a zero year? And if, John, if you recall, and you could offer that out of-
It was around fiscal '04.
Do you recall what gave genesis to that at the time?
I figured-
If you recall.
You recall?
It was the statewide property tax, wasn't it?
Well, there were a couple of things that were happening, I think the statewide property tax was eliminated at that time, and so what we did is, we cut the budget, we cut the tax rate. Tax rate actually went down that year.
Believe it or not. Councilor Novlin Clayber?
I think that was the year, I was on the school board, and we had a million dollar cut that year, and that was painful, but we, we did it, and we suffered from it for a while, but we, we accomplished it. I was just going to say, it was on the news today that President-elect Obama appointed a woman, I forget her name, to look at all the government agencies and see where they could take out, not necessarily, not, not to cut programs, but to look at programs or employees that they really don't need anymore, that, you know, programs that have always been there, but probably don't have to be there anymore, or employees that are there that maybe don't have to be there anymore. So, I don't know, I guess-
I don't know how you forgot her name, her first name's Nancy.
It's Nancy, I know. Her first name's Nancy, I can't remember, it's like Keller her or something. Keller her. But anyway, I was just wondering if, you know, that's-
Well, I mean, we've done that in the past with regards to the matrix study we brought in, and we, we're still working on some of those to, in fact, I don't want to go too far into it, because a lot of it's collective bargaining. We've taken those items from those recommendations, and we're working within the collective bargaining process to try to implement some of those things. But when you have a budget that is labor-intensive, and you have a situation where there's resistance, not resistance, reluctance to laying people off, it, you know, it's not a, it's, it doesn't kind of mix that well.
Further comments, discussion, inquiry, advocacy? Patrick? Oh, Councilor Spear, after that. Patrick, after you.
City Manager, I'm curious if, if tax rates stay the same, what potential revenue growth would we see in the assessed value?
We, that's a good question. One of the things we will, from year to year, we do a projection, and it's very preliminary, but last year, for example, when we put together the budget, we, we projected a $25 million growth in the, in the, in the tax list, new growth, not assessed growth in terms of just assessing to bring back in the ratio. This year, we're seeing limited growth, we're probably going to project 10 million in that area, which, you know, results in a limited amount of growth. You know, it's easy to get loose with your projections, because you just have to pay for those in the future. We're pretty conservative, we've always have been, because we believe that if you overestimate and it doesn't come through, you got to make it up somewhere. So that is our estimate at this time.
Councilor Spear?
Thank you. We know the national economy is not doing too well. City Manager, do you have any sense for what the, how the Portsmouth economy is doing in terms of, you know, any of the city departments have a sense?
Well, you know, and I've listened to Ross Cutell, and he has made some presentations in the past, and historically, what has happened in New Hampshire is, if you look at what's happened nationally in some of the other areas of the country, such as Florida and Arizona, there's been a major V drop. And in New Hampshire, as he describes, it's, we go, it takes us longer to go, you know, to get deeper into recession, and longer for us to kind of come out of it. So his projections that I've seen, that he's made, is it more or less is, it's almost more like a U that he shows, rather than a deep dip. I guess here locally, you know, that, that's a question that we can talk about, we, before you came in, we're going to have the assessor come in on January 26, talk about how property values are holding and what we see in the marketplace. But there are things that we have no access to, such as, has, how many people are losing their jobs? We can find out what the unemployment rate is for Portsmouth, but we don't know who that's affecting, we don't know if people have had to take a cut in their pay, we don't know what's happened to their personal investments. There are so many factors that go into that, and I, I think the only thing that we can look at is building permits, which we give you on a monthly basis, we show you what happens there, and also with regards to assessed values and market values on, on properties. So we'll take a look at the building, the building permits, we'll take a look at that, how those are trending. We also look at delinquencies. We look at delinquencies, and so those are, we'll put together some information on the building department, delinquencies, and, and assessments, and how we, we are in those areas. But beyond that, it's a, it's a guess for us, you know?
Councilor Smith?
Quick question, one, one piece of information we always get from you, John, I didn't, and I'm just missing it. It usually gives us what one penny on the tax rate is?
$38,000.
One penny is $38,000, thank you.
Councilor Novlin Clayber?
Today was a snow day, so I watched the news all day, it seemed, but is there any chance from the new president that some of the funds that he's proposing go to communities, could ever trickle down to some of this stuff?
Well, I think you got a copy of the letter that we sent to our congressional delegation on request for funding if the stimulus package goes through, and they were looking for items for the stimulus package, and one of them is, we did include the middle school, we did include the water treatment plant, we did include the wastewater treatment plant, we included the real nuts and bolts infrastructure projects. And, for example, the water treatment plant is 95 percent designed, it's ready to go. So that, that one has sustainability aspects to it, it is ready to design and ready to go, and so if we're able to secure, that would be an area that we'd be hopeful.
I'll just comment further to say, and again, I appreciate the council's support in, in helping draft and getting that letter out. I have spoken to Senator Gregg and Congressman Hodes, and I've spoken to the staff of Senator-elect Shaheen and, and Carol Shay Porter. They are still not sure, and we are all waiting to see, how they will administer those funds. And the reason that's something for our consideration here as a municipality is that the likely receptacle of those funds in the first instance might be the states. If that's so, then there are state infrastructure projects, and then there are municipal infrastructure projects, and we might all argue that all of them are in our economic and best interest. So the process is evolving, and we will continue to communicate closely with those staffs, they have all agreed to communicate with us as the process unfolds, and we will periodically report to you, so that you understand where we are and what we're learning about how that process might unfold. And everybody's doing it, so we'll keep you informed. Further questions or comments regarding this evening? Well, unless someone decides they, they want to go forward, I will just say this. I appreciate your attending, and I think it's important to remember, especially for those of you who are newer to the process, that we as a city council, and we as a city, all our boards and commissions, we're not unreasonable people, we all try to work together. We know this isn't going to be easy, and we might not actually get there. But if we engage in the process as we have in years past, maybe we can get close, and maybe we can make it happen. I might also say personally, and I can't speak for other councilors, but I know others have indicated, that we're not a city that typically doesn't fund its public endeavors, education, police, fire. We fund it, and we fund it well, we bond well, we do capital improvements in a sensible and prudent manner, and this isn't, I, from my personal perspective, and as we all talk, I don't think anyone thinks this is a change in philosophy for years to come. It's a circumstance we're presented with that is obvious and well-documented and apparent to us, and we wouldn't come to you with these kinds of requests and discussion if that were not the case. And I don't think, you know, everyone's, the good Lord willing, in three years, two years, however long it is, that as we start to cycle out and we see things get better, you know, we continue to be the Portsmouth that we always have been, this is just a difficult time and circumstance. So I appreciate your consideration and indulgence. And every time, as Councilor Smith rightly pointed out, when you, when you come to us with, this is what this is going to do to our department, that's, that's the, that's what we need to hear, and that's what we're going to really dig in on and listen to, and hope that it goes in a direction that we can all tolerate for a year. Councilor Pentelakis?
Yes, but I should, would like to say that I hope that we don't sit here and give people false hope that we're going to hold this budget, and then come up at the end of it with a $50 increase, because we couldn't find ways to do it, because there is creative ways, and people are hurting out there.
Further comments or discussion? Does anyone else? Chief Police?
All set.
He is all set. Well, with that, we look forward to lengthy discussions at meetings going forward in our new appointed social group that we are all a part of. Have a good evening.